Okay, thank you for joining the Selectmen in the Town Administrator Search Committee on February 29th, 2015. And before we begin, would everyone please rise and...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first item on the agenda is the job description. And we have two drafts here. One was the draft original, and then one was the draft with some changes made. So I guess if we want to go down, or do we want to just... I can go... Anybody want to hold any certain... Discuss anything that... About the changes that were made, we'll stop and discuss each category.
I can give some background on it.
Yep, sure.
Want me to do that?
Sure.
Good evening, everyone. Rich Gravelo, 39 Grove Street, member of the committee. We met several times to develop this draft. We met with our committee, subcommittee, back to the committee. We met with you folks in the town council a couple of weeks ago. And if you remember at that time, she gave us two different options on how to accomplish this. One was to do special legislation, and the other was to do it within...
Chapter forty-one.
Chapter forty-one, section twenty-three A on that. She felt that we were well within our rights to do it that way, and we could do it quicker than special legislation. When we originally wrote the job description, we wrote it at the high end, i.e. the special legislation, the strong town administrator. After meeting with her, she took a look at the draft, and she came back with a series of changes in the draft that brought it back so it conforms to chapter forty-one, section twenty-three A. So those are really the changes that you see in front of you right now. There's one other change. Originally, when we met, we said a bachelor's degree with five years' experience, and a master's degree would be a plus on that. The master's degree being a plus didn't get into the final draft on that, so we added that. Looking that over tonight, there's one word in there that was... Wasn't picked up. The word "apolitical." We had voted to change it to "non-political," and I didn't catch it in the final draft that I sent to Helen tonight.
That's on page two, under the heading "Nature and Purpose of Relationship."
So the changes take two courses. One is the fact that they meet the provisions of chapter forty-three, section... Chapter forty-one, section... Yeah, you got it on that. And the other one are really grammatical changes that were made in the document. So there's really not a whole lot of massive changes in it. We looked at it. We felt that what the lawyer had given us was good, and we voted to accept that. And so you see... I think you see both copies tonight. You see our original?
Yep.
And then you see the one with the lawyer's changes on there. And if you want, we can talk about them individually, individual sections, or however you'd like to do it, Roland, is fine with us on that.
Yeah. For instance, statement of duties, if there's no questions with anybody, then we'll just right pass it.
Okay. And I think the major point in all of these, which are under the supervision and control of the Board of Selectmen, subject to the direction and approval of the Board of Selectmen, you'll see that throughout the document. And that's the big change from the strong town administrator to working within the existing legislation there. She also said that after we get this going, if we want to go to the next step, we're well within our rights to do that.
If I may, Jim, just to give you time reference, she had experienced it both ways, two different towns, Midway and Sherwin. The one that is the special legislation has to be filed in the law system, took it minimum a year and a half.
Wow.
So we chose to go the one that would be with the town meeting, coming to make approval, to make the changes that we should have. So it's really a timing thing. And we could always go to that next level if the town or the board needed it, so too does...
Now we have to go through town meeting again to go to that next level, if we chose to.
Yes, to go to the higher level.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you're going to go through town meeting, and then we'll probably have to be on a ballot, too, right?
It's up to the state where the legislature will require that.
They have required it. Some towns might have required it, and others, so there's no, you know, there's no real...
It could be forever and a day, and it could be...
Well, it could be a long time. That's the thing. It did not appeal to us.
No.
Give that time.
Makes sense.
The second paragraph, that's a key paragraph, because that really defines this person's left and right limits, on how much authority they really have.
Yes.
And it's really up to you as the board to determine that.
Yep.
So this paragraph is set up that allows you to give them as much authority as you seem they should have, whether it's limited at the beginning until you get a feeling of how they're doing, or whether you wanted to give it more based on what your experience is. So that gives... This gives you the option. The next one, confidentiality, it's really, you know, it's basic. You know, they're going to work with confidential records and everything else, and they're going to have to be able to keep that confidentiality on that.
And which is what we already do with... Through the executive secretary, so that's no change to...
Nope. The next one grows on that previous paragraph. It just says... This is where we would define how much supervisory responsibility they actually have. The next paragraph talks about judgment. The person who has this job is going to have to use their own judgment on a lot of different things on it. And how much latitude they have will be based on the experience, and again, your comfort level on that. Complexity, the job is complex. I think everybody realizes that. Nature and purpose of the relationship. Diplomacy is critical, things like that. You're going to be working in an environment where you're going to interact with many different agencies, government groups, civilian organizations, non-government organizations. And I'm going to call your attention to page three, right at the top, on the second sentence, where it says "apolitical." That's a mistake that should say "non-political." We voted on that at our meeting. We didn't particularly care for that, that word "apolitical" on that. Accountability.
If I may, sorry. That then becomes consistent with the legal brief. When we get up to page nine, the lawyer had changed that.
Can you stop there a second? You're over there speaking with peace. I guarantee the townspeople are not going to be able to hear this better. So who wouldn't mind?
You're in 1047 Grove Street. The reason I wanted to mention that on the "apolitical" versus the "non-political" is that that... To be consistent throughout the entire documents, the town council head said it should be "non-political." So where that says "apolitical," it should say "non-political." You'll see further in, it says "non-political."
Right.
So it's not... It's just the word changed and the way that she wanted to make the change. So we wanted to capture that in her notes as well.
The next paragraph, this person has to be accountable. Has to be accountable to the Board of Selectmen and the townspeople to accomplish the mission of the town, to provide government services to our town. And that ties into the next paragraph, evaluation. I think everybody knows that what needs to be done can't get done in one year on it.
No.
So it's got to be a collegial team effort between the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, and maybe even some of the departments, to establish what those goals are going to be for a given fiscal year. In other words, you establish goals at the beginning of the year, and those are what the town administrator is going to be evaluated on, on how well he accomplished, he or she accomplished those goals at the end of the rating period, at the end of the fiscal year. Normally, in a case like this, there's an intermediate period where you get together with the individual, and you have a progress check, and say, okay, here's the goals we set. How are you doing on each one of these goals? You ahead of schedule, behind schedule? And if you are, what are the reasons? If you're ahead of schedule, can you take on more responsibility? So that's a key point in all of this. And the next one gets into occupational risk. It's basically a human resource paragraph that I actually found in every job description that I found, so we put it in. Next, we go into essential duties and responsibilities. And instead of lumping them all together, I broke them out, but we broke them out. In administration, we talked about that. Coordination, we talked about professional, provides professional advice to the Board of Selectmen, maintains professional competence, financial. They need to establish and oversee the department's annual... The town's annual budget and operating capital budget, and then work with the finance committee, and then work with the various departments to see... To ensure that it's being executed properly. Also responsible for planning. Planning takes the form of many different things, to include the town's master plan, strategic plan. And that's where you develop the grants. That's where it's important to say, we need to develop some grants to take the burden off of our capital program, things like that. And it all... It's a building block effort here, starting at the top with the strategic plan, the master plan. You develop goals and objectives, and that's what they use to go out and look for grants. Say, okay, this year, we want to meet this goal, or we want to meet this objective. Therefore, we're going after this on that. So that gives you the opportunity to do that. Procurement. When we talked to Helen early on in the process, she said that's a big part of the job, is being the procurement officer. And if you don't get that right, there's probably personal liability involved, and there's also generative liability to the town if they're not putting... Awarding contracts correctly. So that person has to be well-versed in that. Policy and law, it should be well-versed, and all assets of Massachusetts municipal law and code of federal... Code of state regulations. And they also will be the public relations person for the town. It might be the spokesman. You folks are all avocationalists. You have regular jobs. If an issue comes up during the workday, and you're not able to get here, somebody has to speak for the town. And as the senior person, that person has to be able to stand in front of a camera or a reporter and be able to articulate the town's position after talking with all of you via phone or whatever, and be able to speak for the town until you're able to arrive on scene on that. So that's an important part. And then we got into minimum required qualifications. We talked with education. Originally, I'd put a master's degree and ten years' experience. Kept it up to high end. The entire group really said, we need to come back with this. And you'll see a little bit about how that came about a little later in this. And we felt that a bachelor's degree in public administration, business, accounting, a related field, and a minimum of five years' experience in government. I think that's the key. It's got to... You've got to be able to have somebody who's working in this field, not changing jobs. We want somebody to come in here, hit the ground running on this thing, and solve some of our issues. Necessary knowledge, abilities, and skills. Obviously, you've got to have knowledge. You've got to have the ability to work with people. You've got to be able to multitask. And there's just a series of bullets that go along with that.
Also, if I may, where you had the minimum of five years' related experience in municipal government, with a master's degree, a plus, same... Keep the same language.
Right, okay.
That's the minimum that the master's is plus, if they have it.
Those all become discriminators as you're evaluating candidates. This person meets the minimum requirements. This one has a little bit more. Doesn't have a master's degree, but is working towards one. This one has a master's degree. So that's all how you would evaluate prospective candidates in this thing. Abilities. You've got to be able to work with a lot of different people. Some people are going to come in here very angry about things, and it happens every day, until they understand what's behind certain things. And if you can't articulate that to them, they're going to leave angry, and that doesn't help anybody. So this person's got to have those abilities, those people's skills, to be able to accomplish that. And then basic skills, to be able to write, read effectively. And skill in remaining... This person has got to be the o-bunsman in a lot of ways, where they have to be able to articulate both sides of an issue, and let the selectmen decide, after they're given all of the facts, how they want to proceed on an issue. And they can't be... They can't be one-sided in their delivery. It has to be open. It has to be honest, and it has to be unbiased on how they do it. And that's what's important about this. And they have to be able to work with computer skills, as Jerry is pointing out.
Yeah.
We want to move ahead with updated software. And the person who we hire has to be able to be somewhat knowledgeable about all facets of town government. You don't have to be a total expert, but has to be able to go in the assessor's office, understand the process, go into the tax collector's office, understand the process. Same thing with the building departments. And you can go on and on with that. So they have to have a certain amount of skill in that, and some background. Motor skills, visual auditory skills, special requirements, got to be able to drive a car, got to be able to work computers. Typewriters are still out there.
Still have to use them.
Still going to be able to use it.
We have one.
ASD, JKL semi.
We still have one in our office. You need it.
Sometimes you need it. Then you talk about the physical demands. There really isn't a whole lot. The work environment. And then we talked about some selection guidelines. And we'll get into that a bit deeper in some of our other documents. But that's it in a nutshell. I think it's pretty well-written. I was very happy with the town council, or we were very happy, that they... She came back and really, you know, she cut out a lot of the wordiness of it. She fixed it so it matches the law appropriately, without changing a whole lot of the substance of the document. So I think that worked out pretty well on that.
That would be the red mark, the red...
That's correct. Those are what the town council did.
I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. That's no problem. She crossed out, changed, and then underline is what she added.
Added, okay.
And really, all she did, just a quick catch-up, was to put in there the supervision and control of the Board of Selectmen based on Mass General laws and the chapter that we're doing, we're talking about here. You'll see that throughout the document.
So, Rich, with the exception of a minor change on page two.
Three? Page two in the bottom, "apolitical." Yes.
That should be "non-political."
Mm-hmm.
So if that would...
Oh, okay. I got it. Yep.
It's her wording, so it makes sense.
Yeah.
So if we voted to accept this, this would be ready to go online for that one change?
Right. I think I'm not very versed at accepting the changes, Helen. I don't know if I'll be able to... And then format it into the town's formatting.
I think most of the information... Sorry, but my email got sent to Helen, but I think those were sent over to you as to what some of those changes were on that, just to make sure that... I don't think it's going to be a problem, but I'll let the town council speak to it, where she changed the word already from "apolitical" to "non-political." But it's still in there as "apolitical." We caught it and said, geez, I really ought to say "non-political," so it stays vertical. It doesn't have things going in different directions.
We might have caught it once, but...
Yeah, I don't think we caught it once, but we haven't caught the other. I hope she won't have any problem with that, but that's why...
She may have missed it.
She corrected it, so she must have missed it.
Yeah.
We caught it, and we just want to make sure that it's okay with her. So I don't think it's a big deal. It's just that as long as she knows it.
We can vote to accept the changes with the...
Correct.
Accept it with the change.
With another approval from town council, you know.
Final.
Yeah, the final approval. She... I think she should have...
She should have final looks, see if the...
Take a look at it right before it gets posted on that.
And then if she doesn't approve it, then we'll have to come back.
And we'll come back and...
And ask her why she approved it already, though.
It may not save us a week or so by doing that.
So I would make...
The job description's pretty much...
What kind of money are you talking here?
What's already...
We're going to be getting into that portion of it.
That's next, actually.
Can you demonstrate that whole thing to you as well, so there's a workup to how we got to where we got to, as opposed to just putting a number out, better to understand it. It's all... I think it was all sent to you guys anyways. It's all there, so you had a chance to look it up.
Most, like, I would say over ninety percent of this job description is already what's being done in the executive secretary's office. So it's real... Other than the new things that administrator would be allowed to do by the Mass General laws, there's only a few new things that the administrator can do that the executive secretary can't do on this job description. So it's really not a whole bunch of different than what's going on right now.
There's one other item that I've got to draw your attention to, that we talked to on Saturday a bit, is that if, in fact, you choose to go in this direction, there's a follow-on piece that you, as the board, is going to have to look at, is the... How is the office going to be organized on that, beyond just saying, okay, we're going to hire this person? Well, then what? What's the organizational chart going to look like for the town government? How that's going to work?
Right.
So I think that's a follow-on piece. I think it's an important piece.
Because I know one thing that, like, Helen can't, because it's not in her... She tries to do it, but it's not in her job description, is to go to each department or committee and say, we need this, and this, and this, and this. Bye.
Right.
Has to come to us, and we waste a part of a meeting.
Exactly. So that's...
So that's... This is what we try to do already, but it just takes too many...
Right.
Too long a process to get a lot of this done the way it is now. So I understand the whole administrative idea, and I just want the town to understand why we need to have that job title, so that there's certain things that Mass General law won't allow an executive secretary to do, but an administrator can do, and it just speeds up progress, period. So...
And I'd ask you to take a really good, hard look at that organizational chart, because I think that is a success factor that needs to be part of this.
And he or she, whoever we hire, may come to us and say, hey, wait a minute. Let's tweak here and there.
Correct.
Because it makes more sense. Oh, okay. While they're the professional that we just hired, then we'll go there.
Yeah, I think that's the key. It's that you're paying for a service of somebody who has the credentialing on it, has the experience on it, and has the financial wherewithal to be able to pull that together. That's what you're looking for, is that expertise.
I'm just wondering how much of this that person's going to say, I want my assistant or secretary or whoever to do.
Well, this position, this position here...
How much will they delegate, and then how many hours are they going to say that they need somebody to work?
There is a delegation clause in here.
Yeah.
And that's where you and that person would have... You, as a board, would have to work together to see what that should be. And that brings in the organizational chart. Bring you back to that.
I have just a rough example of how an organization chart might look like. I think the board should get together and review... Or come up with...
I agree.
Yeah.
I think being clear-cut in the chain of command, especially with new changes and job descriptions, is a benefit for not only the person stepping in there, but everyone employed by the town, so...
All right. Well, you guys made the draft, so your board would like to accept. First...
We've accepted with the changes that...
You've already...
We've spoken on. We've already voted and approved it on Saturday's meeting. And then many of those minor changes, I had hoisted over to Helen to make sure you guys got it for tonight's meeting.
Yep.
We've already approved it.
So what was the board's outcome? How many people said yes, how many people said no?
It was unanimous.
Huh?
Unanimous.
Oh, everybody. So that's the one I have that I've marked up. Okay. You made a motion already.
I'll make the motion to accept the revised draft we received from the attorney, with the two exceptions noted.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to have the attorney look at it one more time, and it can go up on our website.
Yeah.
Correct.
Have her look at the two little corrections we did tonight.
The rationale on this ruling is that the website, hope to the world, broadcasts it on the MMA. Did I get it right that time?
Mm-hmm.
MMA, and that website becomes alive tomorrow. So for any individual that may have an interest to want to look at that and see, you would need to have what we just approved on there for them to be able to bank, what do I have on an experience level against what the town's looking for?
Mm-hmm.
That's why it became critical. Luckily, we have, what, five Mondays?
Right.
If we had a fifth Monday to be able to approve it on Saturday, and then give it to you folks tonight, so it could at least be posted in time for the website to go live.
It's probably going to be a little bit of a delay, obviously, because we've got to get the town council to take a final look on it, so...
But I think, I would think by the close of Business Day.
Well, I'm sure Helen... Right? I mean, those... We're not talking...
Two words.
Changing the Magna Carta. We're talking two words. And where she already used those same two words in her other part of it, she missed it, we missed it. So while we're asking her, those two words which we have put in for everything else, and she was the one who counseled us on having everything vertical, that the wording is all the same. You don't want to have different wording in different documents.
Right.
We tried to do that, and it's just that one, two words have changed.
Right.
Non-professional versus apolitical.
Apolitical. Non-political versus...
I don't think it's going to change the whole wording, but I mean, the whole thing. I think it could be done just with a, hopefully, a phone call and getting it posted pretty quick.
Right, okay. Excellent. Well, next thing will be the salary... Salary range.
What we did, just so you... We took it in three different segments.
Yep.
Break it down, because of the timeframe given by the sixteenth, when we first gave it to you folks. The idea of that was we broke it in three different subgroups. Those, we met three Saturdays, but those subgroup met multiple times. To come up with what... And that's why it's best that the person that was in charge of that subgroup be able to present what their subgroup did. What I'll do is just color in any pieces of it that we discussed on the Saturday.
Okay.
Okay? So we'll let Brian go, because he was on that subgroup.
Okay.
My subgroup, Brian Faulkner, three Mary Ann Way, member of the committee. So my group's focused on two things: minimum qualifications, which you can walk through, and recommended salary range. So I think everybody has both of those. Do you have? Have we not have it?
Nope.
You don't have it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
John, you got yours?
Minimum qualification.
One-word document, one expression. So one of the things that Jerry was very good at communicating within the committee is that we wanted to have a consistent flow. He talks about it as vertical. One of the things we did with this document, made sure it tied to the job description, made sure it tied into Paul's group on the public relations piece and the advertising. So we made a few edits to this. This document has been approved. You'll see a little bit of correlation to the detail that Rich went into a little bit further on the job description. This would be what would be posted, that a potential candidate could go out and say, okay, what is this job? They would see this document. If you want, I can walk through it. Shouldn't really take a minute. Bachelor's degree in business, public administration, and/or accounting or related fields. Master's degree would be a plus. Must have experience in municipal operations, staff development, and community problem solving. Five years related experience in municipal government. Strong municipal financial background preferred. Knowledge of Massachusetts general laws, code of Massachusetts regulations, and be MCPPO certified, which is the procurement officer certification. Advanced experience with an integrated financial software system and experience with Microsoft tools. Excellent managerial, organizational, as well as verbal and written communication skills. Ability to research, analyze, interpret data, compile, and present reports of findings and recommendations to all levels of authority. Ability to work effectively to meet deadlines, working in a fast-paced environment. Experience with grants, ability to search, secure, execute, and administer requirements. Significant understanding of and experience with community economic development. Ability to remain non-political. Is that, non, actually, we changed this. This was apolitical. We changed it to match up. Uh, make recommendations based on facts and unbiased decisions, and experience managing individual contributors. So our subgroup worked on this. We had taken a bunch of different data points and other examples of job descriptions similar to what we believe we were looking for. Uh, for qualifications, rather, and that's what we decided to put into that document. This document was approved by the committee in the Saturday meeting. We had a couple of adjustments. Those are made in the document you see. It has not gone through legal review.
Okay.
Any questions on that piece?
On this number?
Qualifications. Pretty cut and dry.
Yeah.
It's very clear. And again, it correlates to what Rich had. So we, uh, we then took a stab at, uh, what we thought would be the appropriate salary range that we should be looking at, assuming that this position moves forward. We really used two data points. I looked at the geographical, uh, similarities within our region and looked at a lot of towns. It was a bit of a challenge to go out and find the information. Some people have great annual reports where all the information was right there. Other times, you gotta go looking through pieces of straw to find the needle.
Well, I know some, some of the town websites are.
They're really, yeah. We found some in, in some of the financial documents, some in the, um, FinCom reports. So it, it took a, a bit of, uh, you know, really researching that. So I focused in on the regional comparisons, and if you go up to the top, Jerry focused in with the, um, towns of, of similar size and budget sizes as, as we have. Um, so you can see there's, there's a big difference between the two. If you go from, uh, and again, these are estimated salaries. One of the things Helen pointed out to me is data was a little bit off. One of the challenges we had is we'd find a report from twenty, I think the oldest one I found was twenty eleven, and that's as close as I could've gone for one town. Most of them were in this twenty fourteen range, and a couple in twenty fifteen. Um, I also put the outliers, if you notice, if you, if you go down to the regional comparisons, the outliers, I'll explain that. They were so out of range from what we thought a town administrator would be paid, even within some of these big towns that have some money, that it looked like they were capturing a whole department. What that department meant could have been town administrator, a, a couple of other resources, we don't know. And we couldn't get to that level of granularity, so I kinda put those aside.
Okay.
After doing that, if, if you, and I'm sorry to be jumping back and forth here.
It's okay.
If you look at, uh, the similar towns, Ashby, Bernardstown, Cheshire, East Brookfield, Hardwick, Holland, Huntington, Millville's in there, and West Brookfield. Um, as I said, Jerry took this from the DLS report, was able to go into DLS. I think he had to go in a little bit deeper to get this data.
Again, same type of situation going into the town reports and, and actually going in under the, uh, finance departments in a lot of cases, same as you found.
Yep. So we looked at the salary ranges there, and, and the average there was just under, uh, fifty thousand. We took out the high and low. It dropped down to about forty-two thousand.
Okay.
Um, so that's for those representative towns. Um, same thing, or similar thing with the regionals. Um, what I, as I stated before, I took the outliers out, 'cause those would really skew the numbers. Um, if you look at, um, nine towns, and that's without the two, the two high, uh, with the two highest in there, uh, it comes up to just over a hundred thousand. And then if you add the two highest, it comes up a little bit more to a hundred and six thousand. Um, and if you include the outliers, you can see the number there, it gets way up. It's, you know, over a hundred, almost a hundred thirty-five thousand. Uh, when I carved out the high and the low without the outliers, then I took the high and the low, you see we dropped just below a hundred thousand. So we, we had some discussion about this, and the, uh, the committee felt that we, we should be in a good range, um, if we were to offer a salary of between sixty and seventy-five thousand. We thought that was kinda the range that, you know, we know we're not gonna get up into that six-figure market. You know, we're just not that size town. We also felt that we're not at the fifty thousand range either.
Economic development before we can get to.
Which would be a big piece of this job, right?
Yeah.
So, um, you know, we, we kicked around those numbers, and, and the team felt pretty solid that that's the, the right number that we should, uh, go with, and we voted, and it was a unanimous vote to, to propose that salary.
And I don't have a problem with that actual salary, but my concern is how much are they gonna want help with from a secretary or? You know?
Yeah.
That's, that, those are the numbers that, and again, I don't have a problem paying someone to do that either. It's just our resources are so small.
But I think we're looking specifically for this job. If the job does not state that you would have, uh, at the outset, um, a secretarial help, then that individual would have to accept that position under that premise. Work, 'cause he's gonna be, or he's, she or he or she is gonna be working with the financial budget anyways, and will know what's available.
Right.
Um, and then, you know, then they could make their recommendation based on what they think. Pretty tough to say, I need a secretary before I even get in fine with the job, because I'll find out what the real nuts and bolts are. Most people would come in, spend at least three months trying to figure out how this whole thing works. And then say, if that's the case, that gee, I could use some help with this, or whatever other remedy can come up. There's other ways to do it than just pile on salary with it. Um, are you gonna do that bell curve thing?
Yeah, so if you, if you don't mind it, I'm gonna use the whiteboard. I think Tim said it's where it has to be located, so I apologize to Joe and Jen.
Mm-hmm.
If you can either hurt your neck or move to a different position. I'm just gonna do it quick.
Where is it?
Well, we, we, I think you said this is where it has to be, Tim?
If we put a, like.
Okay.
I can see Tim.
All right, so in, in discussion about, um, you know, Jerry and I kinda got off, we had a, uh, a meeting that Judy had to leave, but we stayed a little bit later. We're, I was noodling this around, um, you know, what kind of candidates would we be attracting, and Paul's gonna go into some more detail on, on approaching that. But one of the things that I, I drew on a napkin at Duncan Owens, which they've got great napkins. Was a simple bell curve, and everybody's probably familiar with a bell curve. What I, what I explain is, on the high side here, you know, we talked about that hundred K within the region, where people are paying for this position. And then, and so that's the high spot of the head, and we call these the shoulders. Um, if we're looking at, I'll just use fifty K out here, fifty K out here. We know we're not gonna be competing in this market. We're not gonna compete against the Franklins and the Callanhams. We just, we're just not there. So, so we're not gonna be able to draw people from those positions that they're on. But what we might find as we go out into the marketplace is that there are people who are on the upstart of their career. So if you look at this as a career curve, you might find that you have people who are just coming out of school, maybe have five years' experience, maybe a little bit more, maybe in a small town, maybe in a position similar, but this could be an opportunity for growth. So we've got people on the growth curve coming up. Who might wanna come to a town like Millville and spend three to five years and get the experience of it. And someday become this, this person here. On the other end of the spectrum, you have people who are coming down the, the downslide of their career, who might be looking at, hey, I've worked in this municipality for thirty years. I get a break, I'm just not ready to hang it up yet. So they might be the kind of people who say, I'd, I'd be willing to come to a small town like yours and use my experience. I don't need a big salary, but boy, I could do a lot to help you, because I've done all those things that they're doing out here. So that's, that's the discussion that we had. So we think from a recruiting perspective, we may find that, you know, this may be our, our sweet spot, these, these type of, uh, candidates.
Let me lend a little credibility, a more credibility to that, I should say. We were able to find, Brian and I were, firstly, working on the internet and all kinds of different things, but we were able to find, uh, in Franklin County. And I can, uh, if you want, I can give you that, you can give it around. And this one here, Roland, uh, really was a, was a with-mind event. What you are looking at is Franklin County, uh, is the Ashtray, Benadston, uh, Greenfield, Mucial, and Orange.
Thank you.
It's indelibly, undoubtedly out west. What you will find on that is it'll tell you the type of, um, uh, person they have, town administrator, whatever it might be. Elected, appointed, annual salary, hourly rate, hours per week. It has vacation sick, personal longevity, health insurance, uh, whether they're union, non-union, and time. So it has all the Bennys incorporated. This, I thought, was a pretty good capsulized snapshot, giving you everything, okay? Uh, again, this is Franklin County. Now, when you look at the, um, the type of, um, budgets they have out there, uh, they're, in some cases, if some of them are actually smaller than ours, and in some cases, they were actually a little larger than ours. But, um, the, the key to it is, is to really take a look and say, we, we don't think, and I think Brian pretty much emphasized that, when you look at, you know, what everybody else is doing around us, Millville is not a MILF. Millville cannot compete for salary and our talent in that pool unless we just get plum lucky, but you can't compete for the type of monies we're looking for.
Right.
So what we did was we took a look at this information, and when you looked at this, you can see that these people here, and I took the whole twenty towns, and, uh, again, this is twenty fourteen numbers. And if you looked at it, I added four percent just as an increase from fourteen to current date. Uh, the average of all of these twenty towns, uh, come out to be fifty-four, six, fourteen. Now, as I view it, there's two different orbits going on here. You've got an orbit right around us. You've got a very small town and a five and a half million dollar budget. And you're competing for talent of people that have, for instance, uh, I think it was, uh, Franklin, you know, this guy's, the guy's got a, you know, a hundred and thirteen million dollar budget. So when you look at those type of things, those are apples and bananas, as I saw it. I wanted to try to take a look at what, what's more realistic with the folks, with the towns and the budgets that's the same as us. Now, if you look at the one that, uh, Brian had mentioned earlier, it has the DLS results. Those DLS results on the top of it was given to us by the DLS because they married to what our budget was, and they married to our population. And that was the first number he gave you.
Right.
So you've got three sets of data points with twenty on the Franklin County. You've got nine on the, uh, DLS recommended, and you've got all the towns that Brian mentioned that basically were in a twenty mile radius of here. When you look at those three things, you've got two different orbits going on. We, because of the size of the budget and the size of the population being three thousand, we have to be in that orbit, which I thought using this Franklin County report would give us an idea of comparable towns, what kind of pay do they get? And what kind of jobs they have and what kind of benefits are available. So that's what we derived after doing all that data point and researching it and talking to the folks in the, in the committee, uh, came up and, um, uh, making that recommendation to the board that anywhere from, um, sixty to seventy-five thousand would be that range, noting that the two target markets we're after is on the young guy that's waiting for the guy in front of him, that geez, I've been here four years in Shrewsbury, and he hasn't gone anywhere yet. I'd like to really move up, and here's a chance to commit and help a town out. I can make a name for myself. On the backside of it, where gentlemen or lady has already proven themselves and are looking for an area for them to be able to come in and, and, and be able to work here, but, but, uh, not put the same emphasis as they did when they were first rising up the career pole. So you got, but the experience is the key.
Mm-hmm.
So you got those two type of shoulders is what we're looking for, and we think that this monies, uh, according to what we've researched, should be, hopefully, attract somebody in those two areas that Brian highlighted.
Right.
So that was the rationale, the idea on it. John, I hope that gives you an explanation how we got to where we got to without just throwing a number out, because I think if you do, it doesn't do justice to the work that these boys had done here.
There are three different things going to you. Maybe we'll have a medium, but I understand where you're.
You see what I mean? And that's, that's how we got to where we got to and the logic we used to get here.
Unfortunately, we could not find that document for Worcester County. That's.
There is one.
There is one. In fact, you go from Franklin, I think in your pack, I, I had Hampshire County.
You had Hampshire.
Hampshire wasn't even, you know, there's really not much there, so.
Five towns.
So, yeah.
No, I know, I'm just like, never finished, but. Go ahead, Rich.
Can I make a quick point on this, uh, Brian's stat, uh, chat there? He did a great job, because it was very difficult to be able to grasp what was going on here until he brought that up. Um, if you look at this not just in salary, but you look at that, the top of that bell curve is experience.
Right.
Okay? Say that's twenty to thirty years of experience there. They're in this range, the salary range here. Where we are, we're in the five to ten year range.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? If they're successful with that, they continue to grow, okay? There's another piece to this that we probably could look at as we go forward. You've got this area in here. We're paying somewhere in here. But one of the things we put in there was, we want somebody who's strong on grants on this stuff. Be able to go out and look for other people's money to spend. And if we incentivize this a bit and say, okay, in the goals and objectives, when you set those goals and objectives in the initial evaluation for the beginning of the year, saying, we wanna go after a certain amount of grants. If you're able to get those grants, I know we can use a portion of, of grant funding to fund the administration of those things. We can incentivize this a bit and say, okay, a portion of that grant would go in the town administrator's piece to administer, and that raises his salary somewhere over here. So it becomes an incentive on their part to really go after additional funds from the town on that.
And in, in fact, in some of those grants, I think we just, we seen some just recently, uh, uh, for instance, the green energy grant. Uh, there are up to ten percent of that grant, as you know, a hundred and forty-six thousand or it was. There's ten percent of that grant is actually available for administrative work.
Right.
So if this person using the same philosophy that, that Rich just outlined was able to go into those grants, and there is an administrative piece, and that most of the time there is, they can use that amount of money also, not only for themselves, but they could use it for their department to get a help in of someone who maybe is a financial analyst who could do some real fast work for us to make us uh, effective in terms of going after grants. So you can do things like that once you start to develop that process. That's the whole idea behind it.
All right, and, and I completely understand all that, but, um, we, we're gonna sell this to the town meeting.
I'll give it to you first.
Right, no, I understand. And, and I, like I said, I don't have a problem paying that salary. I don't have a problem paying a salary of, of a secretary. What I wanna know is where is all this extra money coming from, and what departments are gonna be, uh, hurt for?
I think.
Because we've, in the past seven years that I've been on this board, we've, um, really stripped departments, uh, about to the bare bones, so that's, that's.
I think Rich has any, may give you anything.
Uh, with the finance committee as well, Paul's with us on that. Uh, one of the things that was brought up, I think you mentioned it right at the beginning, is this gonna raise people's taxes? The answer's no. This is our intent right now, is to look across the board and not take from just one department to fund this. We're gonna take individual little slices. I tried that when we were trying to work on, on school shop files a couple of years ago, and I was surprised at how much money, when you go down to all the accounts we have, are just taking a bit, not taking from the salaries, not taking any money from people's salaries. That's kinda sacrilegious to do that, to take from their salary to pay their salary.
Right.
But from the expenses side.
Yep.
I mean, because I know, 'cause those same numbers come to us every year, year after year, year after year, and I know a lot of it's going in there, and then it's ended up in free cash, because not everybody's spending on the same amounts. So we wanna look at that and use that as our, uh, as our guidelines to see if we can be able to come up with the additional, uh, it's about twenty-five thousand additional monies we gotta come up with. We already have fifty thousand in the executive secretary's account. We have fifteen thousand in that clerical account, which I wouldn't touch, because I think we need to leave that there in case whatever's gonna happen in the future on that. If some, if you wipe that out, we're starting even lower. But if you start with that, what's already there, trim the accounts a bit, and get to that point where you have that money that we're looking for, that's seventy-five. I think we can do that without, um, hurting the town at this point.
Well, if you also take into consideration the schools ask for more.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. We understand. That's a given. That's a given, and that's a negotiation that you have to do to get that number to a point where we can afford it, um, within our operating budget. So we, we understand that that's coming at us like a freight train, too, this year. Four different schools, so.
Yeah, but the thing, what I'm, I'm grasping here is, you wanna hire an administrator, what happens to the secretary out front?
We, that's what I just said. We're gonna leave that, that money in that account. We haven't touched that, that money in that account. That position was never filled this year.
Right.
All right. So that's still there.
Yep.
And we would put that, leave that in there.
Okay.
And into the coming FY.
All right.
Now, if you want to do something different with that position, then we're gonna need to work that...
I just want to make sure that I have the understanding that position is still there.
It's still there.
As of right now.
As of right now, it is still there.
With the money.
Right.
Okay.
How much money is on that line item?
Only fifteen thousand dollars on that line item, so.
Exactly. So I'm, I'm thinking that especially an administrator on the downside of the bell is gonna want more help because...
Yeah, exactly. But...
They're looking to ease up their job a little bit and come...
You've got a couple of things going here. You've got, you've got the, the deep battle here.
Yeah.
The strategic end of this, where you want the town to go.
Oh, right. No, I know.
That's where you want this, this person to have expertise.
That's what I'd like to look at is...
But then you have the day-to-day operation of the town business that you've gotta get done too. And how are we gonna do that? Is that one person gonna do both? Think deep? Think current ops? Or is that person going to...
I think that's a little much. You need, you need to have that secretary out front.
That person is, a good manager is a great delegator, you know, can delegate.
Exactly. But you have to have somebody to delegate it to, obviously.
Right. And that's my concern is, do we have enough money on that line item?
I, um, right now, I don't think so.
No, you'd have to lose my opinion. You gotta throw at least another ten in there.
Because, excuse me, Tina, if you don't mind, you work part-time at the Town of Webster.
I work full-time.
Full-time, I'm sorry. And, and you're the assistant administrator?
I was the assistant to the town administrator.
Right. So, um...
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work. That's, that was my question. So, so. And then the administrator is a lot of work as well. So that's, that's why. I want to make sure both things are funded properly to, to get to the top of the mountain we want to get to.
And that's why I brought up about that organization with John is critical. This is what you want as the board of select and the town government to look like. The finance committee's gotta figure out a way to come up with the funding for that.
Right.
To help you work through that piece and...
Because I'm, I'm thinking, this is just me, I mean, I know it include, it would include an, an additional healthcare benefit possible, possibility, but the secretarial to me should be more than the nineteen hour or eighteen hours that the town halls open now.
It, it depends on what you want to accomplish with that position. That's, that's, that's up to you to decide.
I would like to take as much away from the administrator as possible to give that person, he or she, more time and energy to put towards...
Long-range. Versus, versus the current ops.
More that the secretary or assist, either the assistant or a secretary can do for the administrator, the more the administrator can put into the, the long-range goals.
But it's not an all or nothing. I mean, I think we have to prioritize, where do we start and what do we implement? So you start and implement the first phase, say. You know, we get our administrator, we find out what the need is, we find out what the workload is, and then based on them, they're going to tell us, I'm going to need someone extra five hours a week or extra whatever hours a week.
Which, and I understand that, that's why I...
And then we have to take those financial needs and say, you know, does this position warrant more than nineteen point five? You know, because health insurance is a huge cost. So we have to really take that into thought, is when we hire, you have to add on that, or do you, you know, do you take different routes? But that person hired is going to tell us what the need base is there.
So you've just repeated what I'm saying. I want to make sure that the line item is big enough to be able to do that. If the town meeting votes, yeah, go with the fifteen grand, and then we need twenty.
Fifteen's too low. You've gotta have twenty-five thousand dollars sitting in there just for that one position.
That's, that's my point. Don't mean when we have to give the twenty-five dollars.
Yeah. I'm not saying you're gonna spend a twenty-five, but I think twenty-five is a good number.
If the money is there available on that particular line item, and it'll give, you know, we're gonna hire this professional, but we're not gonna give him the tools he or she would need, would be a disservice to them. So I think by bumping that, you know, I mean, I, you know, I'm from cheap, that's me, but I'd, I'd rather, I'd rather have more money provided than less.
We can go back.
Because that's a small business to me.
Right? Knowing, it's, I, and I, I'm not sure if I'm correct on this, the experts can, can help me out. As long as we get that permit, that position on the, on the town meeting wire, and it gets approved with the rest of the budget, if in fact that dollar amount isn't correct, we can go back to the special town meeting.
You can adjust it.
To adjust it, to make it...
And vice versa with the assistant. If you funded it at fifteen, you can add to it a discussion.
Right. Norm, you have a question, Norm?
Yeah. I'm, this is a little bit difficult, but maybe I can clarify this. I did some research, and I was using the DLS recommended government, and I took the Town of Ashby. The Town of Ashby is almost a mirror of this community. Population, it's got five different schools. It's got a regional school, it's got a middle school, it's got a grammar school, it's got a vocational school, and it's also got another middle sex something school. It's a specialized school. They, the difference between what we're looking for here and what they have is, they have a part-time town administrator. He works, in fact, I talked with him today, he works three days a week from ten to four. And he was the town and full-time administrator in the town of Denham and Patrick and Pepperell. He then retired. He is limited by law to only work nine hundred hours a year. He is paid thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. However, he has a full-time secretary. She is paid seventeen dollars an hour based on a forty-hour week. So that would give you some idea of what you might be looking at.
And the population of Ashby, this everybody knows, is thirty-one hundred and sixty-one. Total budget, seven point zero six million. So they're right, they're right around a couple of us in terms of budget, in terms of population.
Population, area, schools, they have full-time police department, full-time fire department. They are just a mirror of this community here.
Yeah, they're about one, one point two million over the budget, but everything else is very close.
If you take a look at Hardwick, take a look at Hardwick.
Looking at that DLS report. You see Hardwick, I think, one, two, three, four, fifth one down?
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-nine ninety-seven. We're what, three thousand? Pretty close.
Yep.
Five point two, what are we, five point five? Pretty close. Town administrator, fifty-eight. And then you see the way that this person chose to do it. They chose to have a part-time administrator for fourteen and a part-time finance person, because they needed to really go after their finances because they were having issues. So they, he took the salary and was able to break it up in a couple of different ways.
Yep.
There are multiple ways to do it. I just don't want to get to a point where we, we put in more than, and, and, and make the person think that they have to spend it. I'd rather the person come to us and say, listen, I'd rather do it this way. I like the finance guy, I like the part-time, that type of thing. If that's, if that's meets the goals and objectives that we set, or the board sets for him to do.
Right.
Obviously, in Hardwick, they're after the finance piece of it and the administration piece. So they, they, and that town, that's why the DLS gave us these. They very much, I mean, you couldn't get a hell of a lot closer than that, I mean, three point two. So it gives you some idea. And the rest of them, and you can see what they do as well. One of them chose just to have a grant. We talked about that before. And that grant writer here was, in Huntington, was forty-five hundred dollars just for the grant writer. So that person chose, as a town administrator, the biggest, quickest, best way I can get revenue in here. It may be helped to get some dollars involved so I can get more help. I need a grant writer. So they went after a grant writer for forty-five hundred dollars. That's all I'm suggesting. There's multiple ways to do it. It's not just always fund one specific thing. An individual, hopefully, through the process of interview and the process of, of discerning the credentialing of the person, that they would come in here and they would have gone through all this material, would have understood the Town of Millville, and would have come in and said, I got a plan right here. Boom. And, and I have no problem that you're gonna need some financing upfront to help, help, help them out with some things. But at the same timeframe, I'd like to think that the person who comes in's got enough of a thought process to be able to put that together and come up with what would be a rational recommendation like some of these other small towns do. There's no one size fits all here. You gotta really use what you got and be able to make it work. I mean, how else do you do it?
It's just, yeah. I just hate to see a special town meeting say, nope, we're not increasing that line item. He's gonna have to do what he's gonna do.
Yeah, well...
It happens for a lot of things over the ti, over, over the years. I mean, that's, that's part of town meeting.
No, I know. But I think, you know, we're relinquishing some of our duties ourselves
to this person that we are going to find capable and qualified to make decisions, what is best for the community as, for that. And I think for us to sit here and say, well, I think it's gonna need a grant writer, or I think it's gonna need a secretary at nineteen hours, I think it needs a secretary at twenty-five, I think is a waste of our, our time, because we are going to be placing that responsibility to the town administrator. And I think tonight, this is what we're determining, like, are we going this route? You know, what is the salary? And then we kind of like wash our hands and interview, get the best, best person in to lead the, the community without us speculating what, what is going to happen or what ifs. We need, we need to hire the qualified person and, and move forward.
The conundrum here is that, you know, we're, financially, it's tight, but we need to look down the road. Where's this town gonna be in five or ten years? And where, where does it have to be in five to ten years? Now, DLS pointed out, we're forty-eight percent of the, below the average valuation of towns in, in the Commonwealth. That's significant. Are you gonna develop, you know, some commercial development in town or entice people to move into town to increase the revenue flow?
I know people are enticed to move into town right now because of the low cost of living in this town.
How about the stockholders in town whose valuations are decreased?
I've been here twenty-seven years, I go by also.
I've been here thirty, so I mean, we're in the same spot, and I think, John, pretty much same spot as well. So when you look at it as stakeholders, we're the ones who've been paying our taxes dutifully every year, and what we've got for every dollar that we've given to the town, the return I'm getting right now according to DLS, and according to their valuations, which is what they do for a living, we're getting back forty-six cents.
Right.
I don't know about you, but that doesn't make me real happy. That doesn't work. We need, we need to lead, you've said it before, we need to go and we need to move to town forward.
Definitely.
The idea of a position that you're gonna entrust this person, still under your total authority, okay, on what, that person, you're gonna give that person the autonomy and authority to go after the financial aspects of this town, be able to collect some taxes that have been out there for years that need to be collected, or to do something with it on, on any of the properties that are, that are still available out there. We need to turn this thing around and make it go forward, as you've said. It has, we have to move it forward.
Absolutely.
The recommendation, if I remember, came from this board to the DLS as a professional group to come in and take a look at this. Now, DLS being part of the Department of Revenue. They've come back with their recommendations. We've all seen the report. This is what they're recommending.
No, I understand.
I, I just think that, you know...
What's Finance Committee's plan if the November special town meeting, we need to add ten or fifteen, twelve thousand to the assistant or secretarial position?
Just like the plan's always been every time that's happened. It's, you, you present it, you present it logically and effectively and efficiently, and the townspeople hopefully take...
Well, I know how your work is. I know how to present it, and, but I'm, I'm asking you the, the question of, where's the money gonna come from at that point? Because we're already gonna do, so taking now.
It's very difficult, you know, to just to say, okay, we're gonna take it from here, here, here. I think that's a charge you as the selectman can give to the finance committee and say, you gotta do an analysis to see where you can come up with funding for the town administrator position, and then look at the second position and give some recommendations towards that as well.
And, and which is what we've done already. We've already done that. We've already asked, you know, the question, many, or at least I have, where's this money coming from? That's all. I'm not against doing this project whatsoever, but the way I do my, my budgets at home and, and, and with my, my own small business that I have and, and with the company I work for is, all right, we have a great plan. Now, let's figure out the money part of it, and how's it all gonna tie in and be responsible?
Yeah, we don't have all the pieces to the budget yet together. Once we get those, we can come back with some, some analysis to you. As at last meeting, we still didn't have what our projected revenue will be for the coming year. And I think we're gonna get that tomorrow night. And we keep progressing on this, and we'll, we'll work towards that. We make a recommendation back to the board of select and say, where does this one should go?
The other, the other concern, Ron, is the infrastructure in town really needs attention.
I know, Joe. Joe, you're not educating me with anything right here. You know, we're talking, we're beating a dead horse actually right now. I know what needs to happen, and I, I'm, I'm just super money conscious. That's the way I've always been, was brought up that way, and still in that way, you know? And I'm a person that don't use credit cards, don't borrow money, I got a mortgage, that's it. I do, I pay for everything upfront.
Well, that's commendable, and that's still, that's a good way to do it. It's the way I did it when I first was coming through. But the same factors arise here. You've got a monies availability now in a position. Some of that, most of that, we transfer over to the town administrator, to the, all the things that's been shown here. So you've got that transfer of that over. I think the legal counsel had told us that night that you can assign those same duties over.
Right.
Okay?
Yep.
There's no issue. I was, I was horizontal with that. You can do that. The future of the town, I'm not, I, I don't, I just find it, as, as Jen had said, you know, we're talking about an extra ten thousand, twelve thousand, fifteen thousand, whatever it might be dollars. I, I think the future of our town's a lot more expensive than that, and it's a lot more worthy of, of better detail than that. And we need to have that professional help.
Yep.
With the DLS, and I think we just, did we not just get a couple of different grants in?
Mm-hmm.
Just got a couple of grants in to help us with that. One for twenty-five thousand, once we put this in place, and another one for fifteen, I think it was.
Thirty-five.
For thirty-five. So when you, you put those together, you've got the state really wanting to try to help us.
Yep.
They're looking for somebody that they can come to, to, with your direction from the, asking them to do an analysis of the town, which they performed, and they've told us what it is that we need to do, and they're willing to put some money up to help us. I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna sit here and argue...
See, but that's not already, that's not always there.
What isn't always there?
Those grants.
No, there's already going.
Yeah, but that's this time.
Oh, this, this...
That's what I'm saying. It's not always there. So we have to come up with a number where this town can afford it. I mean, you can't always rely on grants.
No, I, I think we haven't relied on grants at all here. That's one of the issues. One of the things we're trying to do is we use the grants that they've given us to be able to use them to the best advantage of the town to get the professional help we need to get the financials going. I mean, they've already given it to us, John. I'm not asking for it. They've given it to us.
If, if Finance Committee is, is comfortable enough with leaving that line, the secretary line, and that we're still talking about, leaving that at fifteen, and know that we can juggle and whatever in the event that, that the administrator would like to bump it, then I'm good with that. I was trying to put it to twenty-five right out of the gate.
I'm comfortable with leaving that there, but I'm also looking towards doing an, an analysis to see, we have, we have to come up with additional funding for the town administrator.
Yep.
And at the same time, we're gonna look at that other position and see what we can do for that one, to strengthen that one as well.
Why does it have to be a full-time position? Why's it gotta be between sixty and seventy-five? Why don't you make it fifty-five and sixty-five, and make it a thirty-two hour position?
I, I think the problems that we have in this town are too great to do in part-time. I think we're gonna need somebody full-time in here to set the direction in the town to bring us, us forward.
I think it's gonna be salary, so there isn't really gonna be technically an hour amount. It's gonna have to be, here's your goals.
Yep.
This is what we want in, in three months, or whatever, you know, whatever timeframe we give them. And they're gonna have to get it done. And they're gonna have to get it done.
Yeah.
Like Helen's got a thirty-two hour position, but she works over forty.
There's a lot of competition from the surrounding towns for that same commercial dollar that we're looking for. And we've gotta be able to be one step ahead of those towns who are set up right now to go finding that. We're not.
No, I know.
And we could be. We could be.
And I understand all of it. I just wanna make sure. I was just, I wasn't trying to knock down the administrative's hours or money.
No.
I mean, I'm, when, when we interview, I'm gonna try and get them on the low end to agree to it and then give them an incentive to work to get more. But I wanna make sure that we have funding available for them, for the tools that we're gonna ask for. That's all. And that's what the administrative assistants, or if they prefer a secretary, that's fine, but that's their tool. I mean, like, like my toolbox, that's their tool and, you know, my company gives me, you know, quite spoiled and they give me anything I ask for, for tools that I can justify production. And I'd like to be able to have the tools to give that person. But if you, if you folks feel comfortable leaving it at fifteen and with the ability to bump it to the twenty-five or whatever we might need, then I'm comfortable with that.
I think we're gonna do an analysis and see where we can bring that number to before this, the annual town meeting.
Right.
Where we can bring both of those numbers to.
That's fine.
So you have a comfort level going into there saying, okay, we, we can do this without impacting other programs in town.
Right. No, I know. And I know the person, if they do their homework, will look, oh, I only, you know, and they'll know that they only have a fifteen thousand dollar budget for some sort of assistant. You would think that they would know that coming into the interview.
Well, yeah.
But I don't want them to be shell shocked either. Yeah.
And that'd be one of the questions I'd ask you, so what are you gonna do with that position?
Exactly.
You just made a super good point and, and I'd like to go back to it.
Yeah.
You said that, that your company gives you whatever tools you ask for if you can justify the production.
That's right.
It's called doing a cost benefit analysis, which is exactly what we're doing here.
Yeah.
Putting the value on, on this position.
Yep.
Based on the needs of the town.
And I also know how town meeting works.
Exactly, but, but, and then, once that position, once that person for that position is identified, then it is the responsibility of that person in that position to justify the tools that they need.
Right. No, I know that. And that's what I get that. But I also know that in the, in, in private business, as you would know, cause you, you own a business, if I tell you, I, Paul, I need this tool today and you can, oh, I'll get it, like that. No town meeting required. Unfortunately, town meeting takes longer and that's why I just wanna know that fifteen thousand, you guys feel it's good? You guys are the study, did the studies for us. That's why we appointed your committee. If you guys feel good that the fifteen thousand is enough, that, that was.
I would just like to get back to the agenda item of the salary, um, of the administrator.
We're not off of it. We're on it. Cause that's part of it. That's part of it.
That Brian presented here this evening.
Well, the salary, I don't have a problem with the administrative's salary. But this is also an important piece.
What I'm getting back to. So I wanna thank you and your committee for all of this work, cause I know it's not easy and it's time consuming. And with the finance diligence and, and their conversation about looking through the budget. So I know that we're, we're being asked to accept the salary of sixty thousand to seventy-five thousand as our range, so I make a motion in that favor.
I'll second their motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm just, I'm just, I, you know, I don't agree with the fifteen thousand on the, on the assistance.
Exactly.
I'd like to just put it up now.
Do they have to put a motion for that as well?
Cause if, if the person.
Not to say it's not gonna be discussed. It's just not for tonight.
What would you like that to be?
Well, I, I already said it, twenty-five. I, because, because if I'm looking for this job, like, you know, say, I'm just, you know, just as an example, I'm looking at this job and I'm looking, I researched the town's payroll line item on the budget and I see that my assistant position only pays fifteen grand. I might not even apply.
Okay, then.
You know what I mean?
That, that's really your line item. That second position there, that, that's still your line item.
No, I, I understand.
So you can set that, what you think it should be right now and put that in the budget and that's what we have to attain as the Finance Committee.
Right.
So if, if, if you're saying you wanted twenty-five thousand, I don't know when we're gonna debate that, um.
Well, that particular line item, we can't, we can't vote on that tonight because it's not on tonight's agenda, that line item. I'm just saying, I'm just trying.
Yeah, Helen, present that to us at twenty-five thousand and we'll work, work through it that way for that position effect. You know, if it's not enough, then we will have to, we'll have to work it through.
I mean, I, I'd like, I mean, we can't vote on it, that decision right now because it's not on tonight's agenda.
Well, I also think all of this kind of work.
No, but if, if, I'd like to present it that way. I'd like to try and bring it to that.
So Wednesday night, that number will be in there, twenty-five thousand. That's all you have to do.
Yeah. No, I know and.
Okay.
I feel, I feel better knowing, you know.
Yeah, I, I agree.
If I went to an electrical contractor for a new job, um, and I saw a ragtag fleet of trucks out in the parking lot, I'd say, oh my God, what, what am I doing? I'm not, I'm not coming. I'd turn around and walk away. That's, that's the only point I'm trying to make is I wanna know that I'm going somewhere that has top quality equipment that is gonna make your job easier and more productive.
So that could be the threshold at twenty-five thousand. It might have to be more, once you decide how you wanna hire it, but.
Well, understood.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd rather go into it with the twenty-five and then if we gotta go up, I'd hate to, but if we have to go up, we would go up, you know?
Ron? We, we, we need to make a motion on this. I need, I'll make the motion that we accept the minimum qualifications.
Yep.
For the town administrator.
I'll say.
As presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now we have the, uh, degree of delegation. So you need this?
Well, that, I just.
Yeah, no, I'd say.
So.
Idea.
Is it on the agenda this evening to discuss the, um, the process of the?
We have, um, the next is degree of delegation in bylaw or special legit- legislation.
I need you gone over, right?
But we've gone, yeah, and we're going over, we're going with the, the bylaw.
Right.
Okay. I, I know I missed the first part.
Yeah, that's the part you missed.
So that, okay, so.
Yep. We're not gonna go with special legislation because it could take eighteen months.
No, and I, I think.
After town meeting.
I think if that's something we wanna go to, I think that might be the charge of the individual, if that's what we so desire.
And that can be done later.
Yeah.
And the suggestion from the higher authorities was to go with the mass general laws and, um, go to a strong, if, if we choose, choose to do so in ten years from now, then we can.
So the immediate business here is to, uh, we've approved the description and.
Yep. The salary.
Salary.
Whether we go special or bylaw, and we're going with bylaw for legis- skipping the legislation.
So, so we're at the point now that we, we have to vote to or agree to get the MMA, uh, the description out onto our website and get the job posting or the.
Well, I think again now, because we just accepted the.
We agreed to it.
Right.
So that's done. So.
I mean, if you wanna amend your motion to also put it on the website, that's all. That's fine. Add that to his motion to.
I mean, I thought that was part of our administration discussion, but yeah, for purposes of.
Alright, so once that happens, you make a motion for that and, right?
Yeah.
And it goes on the website. Okay, so now that the, the thing hits tomorrow in the MMA, MMA, then you also have the website with these things that have been approved here. She's gonna check to make sure that the, uh, legal counsel's good with the happy glad in that one sentence we had, correct? So that should give people detail and we know what the salary is now, so that could give detail again.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah.
And the, uh, only other thing now, if that's the case, then if I understand it correctly, you folks have now given us authority to start an interview process. Correct?
Basically, yeah.
Right? I mean, if you've got it in the MMA and you've got it on the website and you've got the other things taken care of, you now should start an interview process. Okay? With that, if you wish, okay, uh, we can just tell you what we have done to this point on the interview process and that was Paul's group that was handling that with what the process is, you understand what we're thinking.
Right.
And at the same timeframe, um, I don't know if we need to go down through all the questions because you have already been in the seat of same, but at least give you an understanding of what the process would be and I believe the charge that you gave us originally was by the end of March.
Right.
That you wished to then start in April to interview candidates. So we are, as far as I view it, we are now gonna approve to go ahead with the actual interview process during the month of March.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, with that is what it said, do you wanna have Paul just tell you quickly how and what we're thinking about on the interview questions or how to make it work? That way they at least give you an idea what the process is, so you don't just see the person for the first time and not know how we get it. Fair enough?
Yeah.
Is there a, um, date on that, um?
April eleventh.
April eleventh? So we can't interview until we get all of the applications in and then we can show them.
I think we could.
So.
Then we can do that. They come in, couldn't we?
That's correct.
Right. That's right.
That's correct.
April. Um.
Yeah, we could do pre-screening here.
You could do pre-screening, um, interviews. But, um, it's, April eleventh is the deadline, that midnight, April eleventh is the deadline for the last, um, application.
Application from the.
For our posting, for the job posting.
That just means we can accept up to that point. It doesn't mean we can't start.
Right, we can start screening beforehand.
Up to that point.
Yeah.
And then we won't.
We don't screen out. You won't send the two or three finalists to us until April.
Right, exactly.
We get four in right away and we wish to interview those process during the month of March as we the charge here, right, do that. We just don't accept them after April eleventh.
Right.
Okay.
Right, cause you can't send the fin- the two or three finalists to us until April twelfth.
It's logic, it's logical to, to meet, meet with the, meet with the candidates as they come in, but not put our shortlist together until April eleventh.
I think that might be a discussion that your committee may need to bring up.
So.
So did you ever answer me on the, when I get resumes in, if you want me to copy, make nine copies or am I just giving you the one original or how did you, how would you like to?
Why don't you, why don't you, uh, if you, all right, um, you can email me.
Scan it and email it, okay.
And then, um, I've got the email addresses of all the people on the committee.
Okay.
So, um, we can give you that and if you wanna just make a group and just push a button and it would get to the same time of expert ID as opposed to me turning around and having trouble with the chart.
And you might just wanna make sure they're aware of the confidentiality of that first round.
That's all. Hopefully we have, uh, enough applicants to make you guys pull your hair out.
Pardon me?
Hopefully we have enough applicants to make you guys pull your hair out.
I hope that's the case.
No, me too. I mean, I do because the more apples in the, in the basket, the, the better choice.
Okay. So, so the, the charge of my portion of the committee was to come up with some alternate, um, sourcing areas. So alternate posting type things. Um, what I did by, by doing that is, is I went on, uh, some of the local college websites to find out if they had a career posting area. They re- for the most part, it really wasn't one of their focuses on, in their areas. There, there was a few though. The limitation that, the limitation that I had in certain areas is, is up to this point, I don't have the authority to go through a registration as an employer from the Board of Selectmen. So, you know, I'm more than happy to, to type in the information, get all the information, talk to the career placement people, whatever. But, you know, I, I would need the authority given to me from the Board of Selectmen. What I also did was I did a few searches as if I were a potential town administrator looking for a job to see where these jobs come up. The one that I kept running into was, um, the town of Richmond. I ran into it in three or four different places. Uh, some of the college websites are linked to, you know, there was one that was, you know, they had a LinkedIn group. There was one that used Monster. There was one that used, um, careers.org, Indeed, ZipRecruiter, experience.com and, and basically what, what that did is it linked me to these ones that were very expensive. So what I did was I, I sent an, an email to the Richmond town administrator where, where it said to reply to that job. Basically saying, I'm serving on a search committee. Can you, can you give me an idea of what's been working? I keep running into your posting. Can you give me an idea of what's been working? The response I got was the only place that they paid for advertising was the local newspaper online, Springfield Newspaper Online, the Beacon and MMA website, which we've already got covered, and Monster. You know, those were the, really the only paid, so, so all roads pretty much, from what I found, most roads lead to monster.com.
Yep.
So I went on monster.com. A thirty day posting is two hundred and ninety dollars. That's something that would have to be done, uh, through the Selectmen Department because you gotta do it with a credit card and, and all that stuff and it's, you know, that's not something that I can do. They, they post with their extended partner network, which I'm assuming is the one that links back to the colleges. Even the te- they post on telegram.com, which is a Telegram and Gazette website. When you go to telegram.com, it's three hundred and twenty-nine dollars to post it on telegram.com and Monster. So, so you save a little money going right to the source. You, you kinda eliminate that problem. And when you post on Monster, they'll also send you recommended resumes of people that are on their system that have submitted their resumes, that they'll send you twenty recommended resumes.
When you say that, Paul, twenty rec- they, what they recommend?
Yeah. Basically what they'll do is when you put your job posting in, they'll do a keyword search of all the resumes they have on their system in this general vicinity. And they'll come up with, they'll send them with the information redacted.
It will be job titles, so.
You know, job, so, so, you know, it's just a, a screening tool. You know, we can look through that and, and then if we wanna contact them, great. If we don't, we don't. I also went through, um, unemployment has a, a website, work, it's Workforce Central and they have a posting site that's called Mass Job Quest. At first I was concerned about that it was mostly low, low level entry level positions. It's really not. The only difference between the low level entry level positions and, I mean, there was procurement officers, there was town, you know, well, not town accountants, but there was accountants, there was, there was some pretty decent positions posted in there. It's free. So I'll be more than happy to do that, put that in there, you know, if, if given the authority to do so. But there are different levels. The only difference is, is the low level ones give you an hourly rate. The high level ones have the salary line blank. That's really the only difference in, in how the postings read. But, but there again, I'll, I'll use the, the job posting from the MMA as my guideline to send resumes to, you know, whatever, attention, search committee, town, you know, to the, to the town's address. So that's what, uh, the Telegram and Gazette paper, just the newspaper, you probably know this now, was ridiculously expensive. It was for one day in the newspaper, it was a hundred and forty dollars per three lines, seven words per line.
Twenty-one words.
For one week, it was two hundred dollars per three lines, seven words per line. So I, I'm thinking that that's probably at this point in time, not an option.
But you know what? I, I would have to say as many, the people that are looking for this type of job will be online. They're not gonna go, go down to the soda shop, grab a, grab a newspaper and go home.
The, the guy that responded to me from Richmond was the interim town administrator and basically he said, uh, but I expect most anyone interested in working as a town administrator or town manager in Mass will go first to the MMA website.
That's basically.
Well, I would, I guess. I was looking for a town.
They got eight resumes.
A government job.
Libel where you can, people go for it.
Every, every, every job has a go-to, school teachers, school spring, trainmen, different places.
That's why it was critical that we got that in, got it up, so we can see if we can track some people.
Right. So, so that, that leads us to the, to the interview questions. Um, basically, I tried to, to put these questions together, you know, with information from the other members of the subgroup, consolidate everybody's questions, and, and I want these as qualifying questions. So basically, you know, I'm not trying to catch somebody in a, in a lie, catch somebody in a, that's, that's not the purpose of these questions. The purpose of these questions is to see how well somebody recognizes a problem, experiences the problem, fixes the problem, learns from the experience, and, and grows accordingly. So if you read the questions, a lot of, a lot of the primary questions have follow-up questions, you know, like, how would you handle it now? You know, would, would you do anything different next time? Those are the types of questions that, that we kinda, we kinda wanna know, 'cause everybody in every single position makes mistakes at some point in time, and it's, it's, your, your character is judged by how you handle it. So, you know, we, we wanna know the character of these candidates, really, uh, before we, before we shortlist them and send them off to the Board of Selectmen. And, I mean, basically, that's, you know, it, we, we spoke to, to your labor relations experience, we spoke to your management organizational skills, um, budgeting experience, grant experience, I think we really hit all of the key points. Now, what my subgroup had talked about, and we talked about in, in our meeting too, is the deliverable that, that we need from the selectmen is to weight these, because what's, what could possibly happen is we get a few resumes in, and they hit six out of ten, they hit eight out of ten, they, you know, of these key points. Well, if, if, you know, your experience with grants is worth ten points total, but your, you know, ability to talk on camera is worth five points total, we need to, to put some kind of, as Jerry says, a rubric together. So, so what we'd like to see, you know, specifically my subgroup, what we'd like to see is, what I, just from you, without an official document that goes on our website, what's really important to you in, in working with somebody? So that we can, you know, ask, we, we can, we can put that in, in with these questions in, in our minds and, and put a number next to them. You know, this one is really, really important, because it's very possible that if, if the field is limited to our candidates and our resources, then we're gonna have to reset and, and look at the candidates again. If we can't find three that hit, you know, fire on all cylinders, then we need to determine which cylinders are okay to be a little weakened. And, and then we, we need to move down the list and, and determine it that way, so.
Are you looking for a, one through, like, what do you want it weighted on?
You know, I, really, if, just, just the information itself, if, if you put together a, a bunch of points that you've talked about amongst yourselves, it says, you know, these are the things that we've been lacking in the past, these are the things that we really think are important going forward. I, I think our committee can kinda, kinda take that and, and put some numbers to it.
I didn't know if you wanted like a one through four, you know?
I think, I think you're looking for.
I mean, if you wanna do that, that's fine.
I think, I think the committee can do that.
Yeah.
What I'm looking for is for direction from you folks as to the number one, I'll make this up, number one priority is financial.
Yep.
So we need a real strong person that is absolutely understanding how to do budgeting, understanding how to go out and get bonding, understanding how to work with financial analysis, and give you up-to-the-minute presentations on where the, we stand versus what the assessors department has for revenue com, all that stuff, neat, if that's the most important thing, then we will put the weighting on it.
Yeah.
But I need to know, is that the most important, or is it, is it grant writing the most important, or is it whatever else, I mean, you know what I'm saying? So you give us the five things that, in order from one to five.
We'll, we'll put numerical.
We'll, we'll throw the numerics to it.
Yeah, you know, no, and, and finance would be number one, I think.
I, I don't wanna prejudice you.
Yeah.
I'm just giving you an example, that's all I'm saying, you guys need to come up with that.
Grant writing is, is a big one, but I don't think it would be number two.
Again, again, I'm not.
Exactly, well, well, that's the kind of information.
That's what you guys need to decide, if you would.
Right.
Get it to Helen, push it to me if you would, Helen, as to what one through five is. Let me know what the most important thing down to the fifth is, or six, I don't care. We'll put the matrix together in the thing and be able to score it against what you want as the person, the, the things that you think we need. And that helps us.
Would it be easier in, um, for time-wise and, uh, production, and would it be easier for each individual to submit theirs? And then you weigh them?
No, I, I'm, I'm good with this, I'm good, I think you guys just come together and.
We can.
You come to consensus, 'cause let me, let me say something, if I may.
They're gonna be similar.
You, you, well, then, then we should be, I think it's critical that we have the people that are the executives of town all on the same sheet of music. So, I mean, you wanna debate it and come and make change happy to glad in the ordering between three and four, and four and three, that's up to you folk. I'm just looking for five.
I think the board, Mr. Chairman, already prioritized, um, back in September or October.
When we did the, um, the deal S request.
Right, but now you've got the actual report, and I think it highlights some things in there that may not have been fully flushed out prior to getting the meeting, so.
Some, some of those things were specific goals in terms of, uh, codifying the, uh, financial process and those kinds of things.
Yeah, it, it's something that we can take and then take and put some numbers to it. So when we get done, the best, if we get eight candidates, let's hope we do, like they did in the town you mentioned.
Let's hope we get twenty.
Well, i- if, if we get that, we wanna be able to say, okay, we're gonna score these people, and these five.
Yep.
You want three to five, those, these are the best five that line up with what you want. Everything's vertical here, so everything that we're talking about, and job descriptions, to the interview questions, to everything we've asked, for everything dovetails together.
Yeah.
So there's no, you know, that type of mystery taking place at all.
And some of these questions are designed in such a way that when they're answered, it goes on the philosophy of you don't necessarily need to have all the answers, you just need to know where to find them. I, I, personally, as a hiring manager in my past life and, and a, and a HR director, the, the most important skills for someone to have is the ability to learn, grow, and find information and input that information into their particular situation. Those are the most important skills to have. The actual knowledge of things, absolutely, and to a certain degree. But really, the, the ability to obtain that knowledge is far more important than the knowledge itself.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So I hope that gives you an idea of the processes, how we got to this. Some of these questions, um, and we're, we're using a lot of our, because all of us came from different backgrounds, Brian, everybody else, and Judy, we all came from different backgrounds, this is our collective thinking, as I think I heard you say, the more heads, the better.
Yeah.
This is our collective thinking as to how to put this together, looking at all kinds of similar situations and coming up with this composite. We just asked for direction for those five, we can score them and start, start interviewing.
Yep, alright, so if, uh, if we, if we, uh, all take these home tonight.
Yep.
Yes? We have a meeting Monday.
Next Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could, if you could get, whatever you can do to get, to expedite that, because.
And then we can all agree at that meeting to be done.
So, again, like I said, I'm, I'm more than happy to, to do the posting in, in Workforce Central, because it's, it's a free one, so, I mean, I can plug in all the information. I'm more than happy to take that on, uh, Monster would have to be, would have to be done from your offices, 'cause it, there's a, you know, there's a fee associated.
Right, no, I know, yeah.
So, I mean, if you wanna give me the authority to do that, I can get that done within the next couple of days.
Yeah, alright, yeah, I don't have a problem with posting this here.
And actually, actually, if, if.
Now, what he's asking, I think, is that, he's asking for authority to go ahead if you allow him to go and expend money.
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
Go for the freebie.
Don't say it.
Monster, you say?
He wants permission to go.
She's gonna do the mom, she's gonna do, or, or somebody.
I understand that, you're gonna have to authorize funding to take place with the Monster.
Right.
Didn't mean to point you at the Monster.
It's okay.
So that is something, that is something that indeed, um, that you folks would have to direct her. What Paul's offering is that he would be willing to put that over to Helen if Helen goes ahead and uses the.
Well, we already have all that information with our job posting.
So you're all set to go, so all we're gonna do is just, if you are gonna authorize it, then Helen would go ahead and we just give the stuff and she'd do it.
What I'm, what I'm actually offering is to, is to actually do the.
Unemployment.
Do the, the freebies.
You know, freebies, I think, I, I don't think there's an issue on freebies, right?
Yeah.
But I would still need the authority to act in, in the interest of the town.
Or Monster.
Yeah.
Not Monster, but.
Free ones.
Yeah, let Paul do his thing.
And, um.
Okay.
Yeah, and, I mean, I wouldn't, I don't have a problem giving her the authority to.
I think he's looking for a motion.
Yeah, I made motion.
Yeah, second.
There you go.
All in favor?
Thanks.
If, if everyone agrees, I think.
Do you wanna say something, Rich?
Let Helen go to Monster and let her.
No, I'll, I'm just gonna clarify the, the scoring on questions.
Okay, any other?
And, and then Monday night's meeting will, will fi, will finalize scoring these.
Yeah, all, all I'm asking is.
Five categories.
Is any way that you could expedite that quicker?
Well, we can do, like, like Jennifer said, and just all email our thoughts to Helen.
Because you've said, I think I heard, that was already done, correct?
For the most part.
For the most part, but it was done pre to the DLS report.
Correct.
Now you have benefit of DLS report, where it's already been done prior, which would be a really short task to put the five together and just agree to it.
'Cause we don't, we've already, you know, we don't need to vote on that.
No, that, that's just giving us instruction as to what you want, that can be an email back and forth, so.
If Helen gets a five, or four, four or five.
What are your thoughts on that?
Well, what, what he was saying was that it was before the report came out, so he wasn't sure if your thoughts changed since you read that report.
Otherwise, we gotta wait till Monday.
Where do you have it?
Yeah, I don't know, my fear, my, my hope is.
The report, you all received a copy of it.
I know, but did it have that specific?
No.
If you'd like, I can email all of you and, and remind you of what you voted.
Why don't you do that, Helen?
Yeah, that'll give us a.
If I have to get you ten, you're all gonna be pretty much right around the cup anyways. So this isn't, this isn't something that shouldn't, it could happen fairly quick, I think, is what I'm saying.
Well, it was already done, it's already agreed upon.
It's all common sense.
Right, right, if anything has ever changed after the report, which you like some specific things, I think, then that can.
Two might become three.
Huh?
Two and three may.
That's what I'm saying, I know, I think one and two are pretty much the same.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just thinking of values, good.
What we're really trying to do is, when they answer the questions, is to turn that verbal answer into something that's quantifiable, mathematical.
Yeah, no, I know.
And say that, and the end will say, okay.
Yeah, we understand.
And then you can present it saying, yeah, here was our process, this was the outcome, so.
On a scale of one to ten, he's a four with finance, but he's, you know, whatever.
Exactly.
What they do, or already has the question answered in their own head, they're just hoping that the candidate answers the same.
Right, you might wanna say, each question, if you hit this, 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 and this, there's a score for that. If you missed this, here's what we were looking for in the answer.
Exactly, and if they say, if they don't know the answer, but the way they answer your question, could still score them a good point.
It could, it could based on.
The intelligence of the answer.
We'll, we'll hear that, we'll hear that.
Then we'll reply.
I memorize.
Are we done?
Um, can I just?
Well, you can't.
You got everyone.
Can I just ask that an agenda item be placed for Monday in light of our, um, approval of the administrative salary, the job, the descriptions, the qualifications?
I can photocopy.
That we place the executive secretary notification for, um, 'cause there's a clause that we have to do it in a certain timeframe. So I'd like to put that on the agenda for, for Monday, so that we're within the timeframe of that.
Yeah.
Legally, just to cover ourselves.
What's your motion on?
No, I'm just asking for it to be placed on the agenda, just like we did the questions and all those other things to tidy things up.
She's just asking to put it on the agenda, we can't do that now.
Well, we, we can put it on.
Yeah.
We don't have to vote on that.
No, we don't, I just wanna make sure we're putting questions, we're putting, making our agenda items so that everything's clean, I just wanna make sure that's included.
Yep.
So.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would just ask for a motion, um, now that the board has, um, approved the job description and it appears the process by which will be a change to the bylaws, I would just like a motion to authorize town council to amend the bylaws um, as necessary in preparation for town meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Completely taking care of the agenda, so any other questions, comments, we'll be closed. Okay?
I'll make a motion to John.
Okay.
All in favor? Alright, thank you very much for coming, everyone.